I call to order and welcome you to the Middletown, Ohio Regular City Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. Please join me for a moment of meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. You will hear three taps of the gavel when it is time to stand. Please join me for a moment of meditation now. Clerk of Counsel, Mrs. Amy Skank, please call the attendance roll.
Mr. Lally.
Present.
Mrs. Carter.
Mr. West.
Here.
Mr. Horn.
Here.
Mayor Slamka.
Here. Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Carter?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. We will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Slamka.
Yes.
Mr. Lally.
Yes.
Yeses have it and the motion passes. Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is citizen comments. A professional presentation free of foul language is expected. This is not the time for debate, questions and answer, or any back and forth conversation. This is a time for you, our residents, to be able to present in front of council on record uninterrupted and have the floor. We have received four comment cards this evening. I will prompt each speaker for their next steps when they reach the podium. I would like to call Marva Gaston to the podium, please. Ms. Gaston, you may sit or stand according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence or work address or interest in the city for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Yes, my name is Marva Gaston. Not to brag, but this is me, but this was me.
May we have your address, please?
My address is 913 Sixth Avenue, Middletown, Ohio.
Thank you.
I'm a retired disabled veteran and also a community ambassador with Middletown Camp Connect. After serving 36 years of honorable service in the United States Air Force, traveling the world and participating in various campaigns to include Desert Shield, Desert Storm, Iraqi Freedom, and the War on Afghanistan, to name a few, I made the deliberate and heartfelt decision to return to my hometown, a place I have always considered home despite the many years away to be closer to family and friends. I could have settled anywhere, but I chose Middletown so I could be near my child and grandchildren. It was a deliberate and heartfelt move as I moved back into my mother's home, who is no longer with us. I am writing to express my deep concern regarding the debris left behind from the demolition of the factory previously located along Verity Parkway, which has become only, not only an eyesore as it is a direct view from my home, but also a potential health hazard to the surrounding community as a whole. The pile of rubble stands approximately four to five stories high, towering ominously above the homes that surround it with little to no type of barrier shielding neighbors' homes, businesses, as well as residents. From Verity Parkway, it simply appears as a pile of rubble. As you can see in the pictures provided, you can see how close and high it is to homes that sit at its base with little to no barrier between them. As a resident and neighbor, I am seriously alarmed by the potential health hazards this debris is potentially causing to myself and the community. I recently raised my concerns at the city council meeting that took place on 6th of this month. However, I left the meeting feeling overlooked and unheard. It seemed as though my concerns were dismissed without real consideration, leaving me feeling more fearful and frustrated with no kind of reassurance that I was even heard or that the issue would be resolved in a timely manner. I feared that this debris may contain contaminants and/or hazardous material that could be determined, that could be detrimental to the health of nearby residents and the community as a whole, particularly children and elderly whose immune systems could not likely be able to fight effects from the dust alone, not to mention if it is contaminated. Our homes, cars, and furniture stay covered in dust as it does not, as it does not, no good to clean them. It's always immediately dusty again. We deserve to know what we are being exposed to and we deserve to be protected. The city has voted you all in to keep the best interests of the residents of Middletown in the forefront of all decisions made on our behalf. I look at the election of each one of you on board beyond just sitting at the table, but making a difference in favor of health of the city of Middletown and its residents as a whole. I can imagine any of you not wanting to live under such conditions. I cannot express strongly enough how disheartening it is to move home after decades of service, serving the war zones and protecting freedoms we all enjoy, only to feel that my health, safety, not just for me, but the community are being disregarded. I did not return home to quietly suffer the consequences of environmental negligence, nor do I want to see our community learn too late that this debris has caused a preventable harm to the residents of this city. I respectfully urge the city council to conduct a thorough environmental assessment of the demolition debris if you haven't done so already. Publicly disclose those results at any identified health risk. Provide a clear, timely plan for removal or remediation. Ensure that residents are fully informed and engaged throughout this process. The people of Middletown deserve transparency, accountability, and action. We should not have to wonder for years whether we are being exposed to danger, only to find out when it's too late.
Thank you, Ms. Gaston. That is time. Thank you.
Can I, can I just say a couple, Ms. Gaston, real quickly? Ashley, where, so where are we with the paperboard right now, that site?
We actually have Tom Minery here, who's our remediation contractor. If we could have Tom come up and give a couple of statements.
Sure, yeah.
Where we're at. That'd be helpful.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Oh, no problem.
You may sit. That's, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we could do that right now because usually we would probably handle this during new business, but since that's at the end of the meeting, I think it's timely to handle it now. So, since she's here, Tom, would you please come to the podium? And maybe you could speak to, I know you weren't prepared for this tonight, but perhaps you could speak to the, the pile.
Okay, my name is Tom Minery. I'm with a company called Burgess and Nyple. And so where we are with regards to the paperboard side is the following, that the, the site, obviously, if you haven't been by it, it's been demolished and it was properly abated of all asbestos prior to the demolition. And we're now in a situation where we are going to be putting, preparing plans and specifications for soil remediation and soil cleanup in what's in the subsurface. And that'll be put out to bid once the plans and specs have been properly addressed. The, with regards to the piles of gravel, that is, I want to consider it an asset to the city because prior to it being crushed and it would, the, all the asbestos was abated, we actually took a number of samples, I think close to 10 or 12 samples, and had it properly tested in accordance with Ohio EPA standards. And it meets standards as it relates to a commercial industrial site. And the, so we feel very comfortable in identifying that this material could be used as an asset to the city in terms of putting it into sewer lines, water lines, and things of that nature. So, the next, just to be crystal clear, the, the next phase will be remediating some of the soil and the ground, and the soil that remains on the site that doesn't meet the standards.
So, as far as the question at hand right now about the gravel, you're saying the gravel has been remediated before, actually, everything was remediated before and the gravel does not contain contaminants at this time?
That's correct.
So, is there a need for an environmental sampling or investigation?
We've already done that and we provided the city with a letter that addresses that.
Okay, thank you.
So, for the, the existing pile that sits, you can see in the picture that Ms. Gaston provided, so there's no timetable for this yet to be removed or?
Well, I think that's up to the city and their future dealings with subsurface and whether or not they want to sell it or use it within their own city means.
Yeah, because I mean, you know, my, my concern, obviously, I mean, a couple of things. One, even if it's, you know, clean of asbestos and contaminants and things like that, just the sheer dust, you know, pollution and things like that, allergies, the, all of, all of those things. I mean, that's, that's, I think that's something we need to look at right away. Maybe if we can figure something out pretty quickly on this. I mean, this picture, it looks like she lives in Colorado. Yeah, so, yeah, so, okay.
Understood, but that'll be up to the city and the public works and how they want to utilize the material. That's up to their discretion, your discretion.
Yeah.
Is that something that that pile could start being leveled off just right there on the site?
It could be. I think actually we've been talking with the city in with regards to how we're going to grade and seed the site. That is one of the, so that could be used as part of it.
That's what I kind of assumed from the very beginning when it got that way, that is what was going to happen.
I think that's, that's part of the equation.
Problem is, yeah, this, yeah, and, and thank you for, you know, once again, coming and bringing this to the attention. We do need to, you know, start getting a plan in place to take care of that. But, once again, unfortunately, we can only move as fast as the process allows. And I know that's, that sounds like an excuse, but we do need to get moving on it. So, that's something, maybe with public works, we could start. City manager can get with our public works director and start moving aggressively on that.
Ms. Ms. Gaston, if you want to leave your, your phone number, your contact information? It's on the car? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to say to Mrs. or Ms. Combs, our city manager, like perhaps that might be a conversation. It sounds like we are in agreement to have that conversation about the timeline that Mr. West had brought up. What's the timeline? And then also be very clear and transparent, as was asked, with the, the neighbors in, in the neighborhood about what that's going to look like.
We can certainly do that and will.
And then we can reach out and let them know. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Thank you. All right, the next person I'd like to call to the podium is Ms. Cinda Lee. You may sit or stand according to your preference. Please do adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and address, Middletown address, or interest in the city for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Thank you. My name is Cinda Lee. My address is 515 Courier Road in Middletown. Good evening, council members. Thank you for your time. I'm standing for you again to speak on behalf of the cat colony at Smith Park. I respectfully urge the city of Middletown to repeal or amend its outdated ordinance regarding the homeless cat population and adopt a more humane, effective alternative: trap, neuter, return, manage, or TNRM. Our responsibility to cats extends beyond these, those we call pets. Stray and feral cats are not a nuisance we inherited. They are a mess we created and they are suffering because of it. The current policy of removal is just not effective. It's cruel and it's based on a method proven time and time again to fail. Scientific studies and the experiences of cities across the country show that TNRM is the only long-term humane solution. It stabilizes and gradually reduces cat colony populations, improves feeling health, reduces conflict behaviors, and even saves taxpayer dollars. Under TNRM, cats are humanely trapped, spayed, and neutered, vaccinated, and their ears are tipped so we can easily identify them. They are returned to their home territory. Any highly socialized cats and kittens from the colonies are adopted when possible. This strategy is rooted in science and compassion and it works. At the University of Florida, TNRM led to a 66% decrease in colony size over 11 years. In Newburyport, Massachusetts, it completely eliminated an estimated, eliminated a colony of over 300 cats. Here in Middletown, volunteers have been doing this work, often at personal cost because we know it is the only solution that is effective and is of benefit to both cats and the community. Contrast these well-documented, successful programs with the current mandate to relocate, to relocate the Smith Park cats. As previously presented to this council, this forced relocation effort will fail due to the well-documented vacuum effect. The vacuum effect in the context of cat colonies is the phenomenon where removing cats from a specific area doesn't reduce the population. It leads to other cats moving into the vacated territory. The new cats often reproduce rapidly, filling the habitat with even more cats. Excuse me. It is a scientific fact that relocating cats creates an endless cycle of removal and rebound and will exhaust volunteers and waste what few resources are available to us. Furthermore, forced rehoming doesn't work. We saw this firsthand when two cats we rehomed from Smith Park escaped from the comforts of indoor living. This is a clear demonstration of how bonded cat, these cats are to their outdoor homes. If a cat is willing to leave a loving indoor home and endanger its life to return to its colony, it certainly leads, excuse me, it leads to the conclusion that the same cat will leave its newly assigned outdoor home to do the same. I sincerely hope you will take the time to consider this issue again. Turning, tuning me out will not change the fact that relocating colonies simply does not work. TNRM works. Major cities like San Francisco, Chicago, and New York have embraced it and seen measurable success. Even the CDC and World Health Organization recommend TNRM over removal. Middletown has a chance to join these forward-thinking communities and lead with compassion and science. We urge the city council to end the futility of the current ordinance, support TNRM, support the volunteers who are already doing this critical work, and to show our region that Middletown leads the way in humane, data-driven animal policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. The next person I'd like to call to the podium is Adrian Scherer. You may sit or stand according to your preference.
When it's not raining so that arthritics can get around.
And Ms. Scherer, you can sit and spread your work out if you wish, but please adjust the microphone, whichever, wherever you stand or sit and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown address or interest in the city for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Hello, my name is Adrian Scherer. My office is currently not downtown any longer. It is at 3270 Roosevelt Boulevard. And I'm here tonight to talk about a movement that is on in town. And I don't know if you know about it yet, but I'm hoping you'll be. And I don't know if you know about it yet, but I'm hoping you'll be either taking it over from us, or doing it, or helping us with it. There is a movement in town for the city council to go to a ward system such as we had, that was so successful in the 80s and the 90s or whatever, and then we eliminated them. There are so many people in this community who have had experiences, both from the city building and from city councils over the decade, that make them feel as though they don't have a voice. And so if we went back to a ward system wherein people ran for a position in city council in their own ward, and perhaps it would be good to have a person elected at large, that would be the mayor, therefore, all bases would get covered with an enlarge and everybody else voting in their own ward. This all has been really researched. And while I am far from an expert on talking about numbers and maps and drawing lines, we know where all 49,262 people lived when the census was done in 2023. And we also know that there's been a lot of additional housing apartments, condos, and all of that added since then that would change where the boundaries should be, should we draw lines for wards. And we also know that these initiatives can either be done as an action of a city council, or they can be done by the citizens. And we have a large enough committee that's already decided, this will be my job, this will be my job, this will be my job, unless the city council would decide to pick up this initiative and do it themselves. So we also know that all that gets done has to be done by August the 21st. That sounds like a long time, but it really isn't. Not when you first want to get people who have been disenfranchised to even bother to register to vote, and then to hear about what's going on in their ward. So we hope that you will study this, think about this, talk about this, and get back to us as quickly as possible about whether you are interested in doing it as an initiative from the council, whether you want the citizens to do it, whether you want it to be a public-private effort. We just think that it's the right thing to do to give everybody a voice. Thank you for hearing what we had to say.
Thank you, Ms. Scherer. Final citizen comment this evening is from Tanner Polisini. Please come to the podium. Ms. Polisini, please adjust the microphone accordingly, and please directly speak into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence or work address for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please begin.
Tanner Polisini, 3017 Titus. All right, so I'm just here to put a face to the name for the most part. Reached out to you guys via email after a couple shootings at a problem location in our neighborhood, 3008 Titus, it's Emery's Bar now. After a few nights coming home, girlfriend is crying after there's shooting a few feet from our house. Just knew that there was a step that had to be taken, and all I knew to do was email you guys, and obviously, this is that next step. So. One, I'd like to appreciate your guys' response. There's been a few of you that reached out, which I appreciate a ton. Shout out to the police department. They've had a very solid response as well. I just want to take a proactive approach instead of just reacting to everything. So the only route that I've found in just conversation is the liquor license renewal. So mostly, I'm just asking you guys to take that process seriously. With a place like this, with the multiple shootings and constant littering, constant noise complaints, I just think that that system is put in place for an incident like this. So just take that, take that renewal process seriously and keep people like us in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public participation for the evening. The next agenda item is council comments. We will begin to my left with Councilmember Lali, and then follow to my right with Councilmember West, and then Councilmember Horn. I will speak last. Mr. Lali?
I have no comments this evening.
All right, well, thank you. Mr. West?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to speak tonight, Tanner. We've spoken several times over email, and I completely agree. I know, you know, in your profession that you're gone quite a bit, and so it has to be rather unnerving, you know, to be away, or even if you were home for that, you know. So I completely agree. Not sure when that renewal is up, but we will look into that and, and definitely weigh, weigh in your concerns as well as the other residents in the neighborhood. And I don't think anybody should have to live, you know, in that type of environment. I'd like to thank the Middletown Shriners. They invited us out for the Mother's Day Car Show. We heard from a local family that the Shriners Hospital had helped out their, their young child. So it was great to be there, give a proclamation from the city on behalf of the mayor. Also, I'd like to congratulate all the seniors graduating from the local high schools this year. And, you know, I've spoken to quite a few of them, and I always tell them, you know, there's a lot of pressure in society, you know, go straight into college, or go into the military, or go to trade school. And, and I agree, I don't believe in taking a year off when you graduate high school. Keep the momentum going, stay busy, stay productive, and stay learning, no matter which path you take. So, thank you, Mayor. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. Horn?
Good evening. Well, no, first of all, unfortunately, at times, I don't get to go to everything that I'd like to go to, so it was exciting to see the mayor at the fireman's, or the fire, fire headquarters and the uncoupling of the fire hose instead of cutting a ribbon. That was kind of fun. It just shows exciting things are going on in our city, and things that we need to celebrate, but we also need to make sure that our citizens feel safe. And I do feel the Chief Nelson is doing an outstanding job, but we need to keep that in mind and be serious about those things. On safety, it is, I have hope, and it's refreshing at times when I see younger folks walking our streets. One time, I came out of a committee meeting, and there was a young couple with a, with a stroller, and they, it was one of those, I guess, athletic strollers, because they were running with the child, and the child wasn't playing all over the place, so I guess the wheels were right. And they were running downtown. But just keep in mind, the more warmer it gets, people are out and about, so watch for people running and walking on our, on our streets. But it's, it's just, this is a good time for our city, and we need to continue to be concerned about what our citizens are saying and address them properly. And we do take these things serious, and we greatly appreciate, I've always said this, and I've said this to other boards and AMON, we can get emails, we can get strongly worded letters, and we read them. But that's better, I'd rather see your face here and hear your pitch, pace, and power, so I know that this is serious, that you took time out of your schedule to speak here for four minutes. So I encourage all citizens to do this, because that's what this time is for, and we, we want to hear from you and do what we can at times, because there's a lot of times that it is the, the, the city's job to do their job, and they do it very well. But it's at least making everyone aware, because everyone's here, it's necessary to hear what's, what's going on. So, thank you. To your mail.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. I do have quite a few announcements tonight, and to begin before I get to that, I wanted to speak to some of the comments tonight as well. I do take notes about what our residents do say, and I'm able to also speak with our city manager about them on a weekly basis, just to see, you know, where we're going. Also, with, as far as the liquor license, that's something the Health Department looks at as well, so that's something we'll be able to talk about with the Health Department itself and the Health Board. So as far as events going on in Middletown, there are many, many, many fun things happening at our beautiful historic Soroc Opera House this month. And then, so please do visit their website at sorocoperahouse.org for more information and ticket information for the following. First, there's Friday, May 23rd, that's this Friday, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM, will be The Cleverly's, a one-of-a-kind comedy/ music blend coming from the remote part of the Ozark Mountains near Canesboro, Arkansas. The New York Times wrote, "If Earl Scruggs, Dolly Parton, and Spinal Tap spawned a litter of puppies, it would be The Cleverly's. But don't be fooled by this faux family band. They are all accomplished musicians putting their unique bluegrass spin on cover songs from any genre." This Saturday, May 24th, at 9:00 AM, will be the flag placement in preparation of Memorial Day. Come help place flags on veterans' graves at Woodside Cemetery. With a good turnout, all can be completed in under an hour. Please meet in the chapel before for a history lesson. For more information, please email markwhite@paradesmiddletown@gmail.com. Also, this Saturday, May 24th, beginning at 10:30 AM, the Red Riding Hood Rescue Project, located at 6955 Schur's Road, a rescue operation near Middletown helping to save wolf dogs from horrific conditions, is holding their spring event called Walk with the Wolf Dogs. The Red Riding Hood Rescue Project saves wolf dogs, and that is dogs with recent wolf heritage, from situations of abuse and neglect from across the country. And if their shiny coats and piercing eyes are any indicator, these wolf dogs are happy and healthy. There are only a handful of spots left this time around, so for more information, please visit their website at rr-h-project.com. This Saturday, or I'm sorry, this Sunday, May 25th, from 3:00 PM to 4:00 PM, the Soroc Opera Revitalization Group, known as SORC, is offering a tour of the 134-year-old Soroc Opera House. This is a free event, though donations are certainly accepted, with registration required. The tour will include a discussion of the history of the theater, with looks at the exterior features, lobby, theater, balconies, projection booth, backstage, and downstairs dressing area. Visitors will also learn about current ongoing restoration work on the theater, what SORC has accomplished thus far, upcoming shows, and how people can help with future restoration efforts. There are no elevators, and visitors should be prepared for walking and standing throughout the tour, so please wear comfortable shoes. Memorial Day is next Monday, May 26th. There will be a parade and ceremony to remember and honor the people who have died in service of our country. The parade begins promptly at 10:00 AM, beginning at Smith Park and traveling to Woodside Cemetery. After the parade, at 11:30 AM, will be the ceremony at Woodside Cemetery honoring our fallen soldiers. The Ohio Department of Public Safety, along with our Middletown Police Department and the Hope Line, are holding their second annual bridge events in Middletown for a total of eight events this year, running through August 8th. Join for the resource carnival next Friday, May 30th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Damon Park, located at 1500 Pershing Avenue. This is a free, family-friendly event with food, resources, and support for substance use, recovery, mental health, and wellness. Learn about treatment options, grab a free meal, and connect with vital services. Everyone is welcome. For more information, please call Victoria Hensley with the Hope Line at The beautiful, whimsical, mysterious, and wonderful movie, The Neverending Story, is coming to the big screen here in Middletown at our historic Soroc Opera House. If you are a fan of this classic film, have always wanted to see it, or wish to share it with others, all day next Saturday, May 31st, will be your opportunity. Starting at noon is crafting with the classics. Enjoy the movie while knitting, crocheting, stitching, sketching, or whatever project you're working on. Continuing that day, Saturday, May 31st, will be three more showings of The Neverending Story, beginning at 2:00 PM, 4:00 PM, and 6:00 PM. Tickets are just $10 at the door. Bring the family, bring your inner child, and don't let the nothing win. I hope you can come out to experience this gorgeous masterpiece. As a reminder, the city of Middletown accepts applications for our boards and commissions throughout the year, so if there is something that you have an interest in and you wish to give back to your city in this way, please do submit your application. To learn more, please visit the city's website at cityofmiddletown.org. Lastly, and as always, there are many ways to get involved with your community and give back. Join a board or committee, run for office, apply for a job with the city, volunteer at the hospital, pick up trash in your neighborhood or park, plant a garden in your yard, smile at a neighbor, find joint satisfaction for a job well done in whatever work you do, or just have a positive and giving attitude. Find something that you can do regularly and give back. We are all connected, and we are all in this together. The care of our city is an adventure in which we all get to share. That is all for me tonight. This concludes our council comments. The next item on the agenda is city manager reports. Ms. Combs, do we have any?
The only item I have is following the Town Hall for the Downtown Refresh Project. We're currently finalizing the committee that will be meeting starting in June. I think we have two committee meetings, but you can still sign up, so there should be a social media post or one going out soon for signups, and that will close next Friday. So you can visit our city website to learn more information.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Next on the agenda item, or the agenda this evening, is the consent agenda. While the consent agenda is generally for consensus items, do any council members wish to remove anything from the consent agenda this evening and move it to the motion agenda?
No.
Okay, hearing none. Ms. Skank, please present the consent agenda.
For your consideration this evening, we have to receive and file the following board and commission minutes: the Board of Zoning Appeal Minutes from March 5th and April 2nd, 2025; the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes from March 12th and April 9th, 2025; and the Board of Health Meeting Minutes from April 8th, 2025. To confirm the conditional appointments of Dale Moore to the position of Code Specialist in the Community and Economic Development Department, and Christopher Bennett and Tavion Crosby to the position of Corrections Officer in the Department of Public Safety, Division of Police, and Brady Huffman to position of Patrol Officer in the Department of Public Safety, Division of Police. To receive and file an oath of, oath of office for David Chambeau, and approve the final plat for Renaissance Point Phase Two.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Ms. Skank, will you please call the roll?
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slanka?
Yes.
Mr. Lali?
Yes.
The consent, yeses have it, and the consent agenda is approved. Our next item is the motion agenda. We have one item this evening. Ms. Skank, please present item A on the motion agenda.
To accept the 2024 Ohio Sexual Assault Investigation Grant of 11,784, I'm sorry, $748.96 from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
The Middletown Police Department is launching a project to enhance evidence management and training for sexual assault investigations. This includes streamlining the transportation of those kits to the Ohio BCI Crime Lab, training eight evidence technicians and four detectives in specialized courses, and expanding evidence storage with new shelving and containers. This new initiative will improve the operational efficiency in handling sexual assault cases in the community.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item A to accept the 2024 Ohio Sexual Assault Investigations Grant of $11,748.96 from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Having been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed. Ms. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slanka?
Yes.
Mr. Lali?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the motion passes. This concludes the motion agenda. The next item on the agenda this evening is legislation. We have 10 items of legislation this evening. Law Director Mr. Alex Ewing, please present the legislation.
Item number one, Resolution Number R 2025-13, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31st, 2025. Water Capital Reserve Fund, second reading.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, do you have anything to add? Thank you. With that being said, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Ms. Skank, please call the roll.
Mayor Slanka?
Yes.
Mr. Lali?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number two, Ordinance Number O 2025-22, an ordinance amending Section 1226.01 B2 Planning Commission membership of the Middletown Development Code, which is included in the Middletown Codified Ordinances, second reading.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, do you have anything to add? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Ms. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Lali?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slanka?
No. The yeses have it, and the motion passes. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number three, Ordinance Number O 2025-28, an ordinance authorizing the submission of an application for federal assistance, a consolidated plan for 2025 to 2029, an annual action plan for fiscal year 2025, and a projected use of funds under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended, second reading.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, do you have anything to add? All right, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Ms. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slanka?
Yes.
Mr. Lali?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number four, Ordinance Number O 2025-30, an ordinance authorizing a change order to the contract with Geotechnical Consultants, Inc., for material testing and inspection services for the new Middletown Fire Service Headquarters and Satellite Stations Project and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please. Is your microphone on? I'm sorry. Is your microphone on? I'm sorry. I couldn't tell.
I might turn it off. I'm so sorry.
That's, you're fine.
I'm trying to keep it on from now on, and it's a jerk, so.
Thank you.
All right, so Geotechnical Consultants was selected in twenty-twenty-three to provide material testing and inspection services, including foundation testing, site preparation, grading, and concrete inspections. Additional testing was necessary due to soil compact issues and removal of two cisterns at Station Eighty-two. At the time, uh, as the twenty-twenty-three purchase order is exhausted, an additional ten thousand eight hundred dollars is requested to complete the work at the stations. This is a first reading emergency, so that the work can be continued uninterrupted.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slanka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number five, Ordinance Number O twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-one, an ordinance authorizing a change order to the contract with Burgess and Nipel, Inc. to act as the VAP manager for the demolition of the Middletown Paperboard Site, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
In March twenty-twenty-three, the city contracted with Burgess and Nipel for environmental engineering and assessment services for the paperboard site. An initial contract amount was four hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Additional work was necessary to, uh, for unexpected field conditions, which was approved by staff under the assumption that further testing would reveal reduced soil removal requirements to meet Ohio EPA VAP standards. This assumption was confirmed, leading to the lower final remediation costs. The city is set to receive an additional one point five million in site funding from the Ohio Department of Development, O D O D, for the project. Staff in the firm believe this funding will cover both the financial remediation costs and the additional expenses for which the approval is being sought. The financial impact, the city council is considering the supplemental appropriation partially reimbursed by a pending grant. The additional contract amount requested is two hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. The city has seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents remaining in ARP and funds from Butler County, which can be redirected for the paperboard project. The remaining one hundred and fifty-four thousand twenty dollars and thirty-three cents will be paid from the account in the Property Development Fund and will be refunded upon receival of the grant funds. This is an emergency. Staff requests council's consideration of passing this measure as an emergency, so that the legislation may be passed in effect and will not delay the work at the site.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slanka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number six, Resolution Number R twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen. A resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and declaring an emergency, Fire Station Levy Fund.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
This appropriation of funds is being requested to furnish Stations Eighty-one and Eighty-five. This includes whiteboards, bulletin boards, radio equipment, building communication hardware, and mattresses. This is a first reading emergency, that, so that the project can go forward uninterrupted.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mayor Slanka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number seven, Ordinance Number O twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-two, an ordinance amending the Pay and Benefits Ordinance, Ordinance Number O twenty-twenty-four dash ninety-nine, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
The event host position at the event center is essential for smooth execution of events and ensuring guests have an enjoyable experience. Responsibility include greeting guests, assisting with event coordination, and addressing the guest needs. The host works with service staff to maintain the organization in cleanliness, and supports event setup and breakdown. This is a part-time, unclassified position. The financial impact, the event host position is part-time. The new position will be funded by the General Fund. A supplemental appropriation will be presented as a separate legislation item that you'll see next. Funds will be moved from the professional services line item of the Event Center Personnel Services accounts. The cost of the appropriation for the event host and the full-time administrative assistant is budget neutral, and the total cost is fifty-three thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. This is a, requested as a second reading emergency. This emergency passage would allow the hiring process to begin sooner.
Thank you. As this is a second reading emergency, there is no discussion, is that correct? A second reading, is this a second reading emergency?
It's an actual, it's a real emergency for tonight.
That's what I thought. Okay, okay, wonderful.
It says June third.
Let's, let's be clear then.
The staff report says June third.
Okay, the agenda says emergency for tonight.
Oh, I see.
Okay. We have it as a second reading emergency, but I'm okay with a first reading emergency, if that's okay with city council.
Does that, is that a issue? Nope, not at all. Okay. So, as Combs called, we'll move forward with it tonight?
I agree.
Everybody agrees? Okay. Then, thank you, Ms. Combs, for that. And is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? The only question I have is, um, this is part-time. Do we have the salary for the, the full year for the part-time position?
Just the salaries, thirty-six, eight.
Well, that was for here on out, I believe, from about May or June. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, just about times. The, the pay range for this position as proposed would be starting out at like, I'm going off memory here, Your Honor, about nineteen dollars and change up to like twenty-four, I think, or something.
Okay. That works. All right, well, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slanka?
Yes. Yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number eight, Resolution R twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen. A resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and declaring an emergency, General Fund.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
Uh, nothing to add. It went with the last item.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slanka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number nine, Resolution Number R twenty-twenty-five dash sixteen. A resolution approving and adopting an economic development plan, stating that the city may hereafter proceed with approval of a tax increment financing incentive district for the Roosevelt Ridge Project, and declaring an emergency. No action requested until June third, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
The city council is considering the establishment of a TIFF District for the Roosevelt Ridge Development off of Central Avenue. This TIFF District will help fund necessary public infrastructure improvements. Without it, the developer indicates the project may not move forward. To create the incentive district, a public hearing must be held before the city council impasses the legislation. The proposed legislation announces the intent to hold a public hearing on June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, during the city council's regular meeting. This hearing will allow city council to take action on the TIFF. The financial impact, the legislation will not financially impact the city. If the city council approves the legislation to create the TIFF after the public hearing, the developer will cover the upfront cost for the public infrastructure improvements to be reimbursed over time through the TIFF. This will be outlined in a separate agreement presented alongside the final legislation in June. So this is a second reading emergency. Staff requests council's consideration of passing this measure as an emergency upon its second reading, so that the legislation creating the TIFF may be passed and in effect prior to the expiration of certain deadlines under the project's development agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. As this is a second reading emergency, there is no action to be taken at this time. However, is there any discussion from council?
Just briefly, uh, this project has been through, um, us and Planning Commission thoroughly, so we really need to get this pushed forward in June, so they can start the process, because construction has two speeds. If you don't like the first one, you're gonna hate the second one, and with the amount of water we've had and everything to get, to start that, the process of breaking ground, they might be looking at fall on this, if not next spring. So, that's, I know we're gonna push it through, but I just wanted to give my report from Planning Commission that we've been very thorough and making sure that they know what, what's going on, and also, the city doing an outstanding job making this TIFF District for them.
Thank you very much for that update, Mr. Horn. Is there any other discussion before we pass it on?
None for me.
All right, well, thank you very much. Hearing none, we will continue. Mr. Hemingway, I'm sorry, Mr. Ewing, the last item, please.
Uh, item number ten, Ordinance Number O twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-three. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of seven million eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the costs of the acquisition of the town mall and related structures located on parcel numbers seven zero three one five three zero zero six, seven zero three one seven six zero four zero, seven zero three one seven six zero one, and seven zero three one seven two zero zero two, and costs of related due diligence, title work, and design services, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, all in support of economic development and job creation within the city. First reading.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
The proposed legislation permits a second issuance of bond anticipation notes to pay off the initial series used to finance the town mall's acquisition. The previous band issuance was approximately seven million four hundred and fifty thousand, while the new request seeks up to seven million eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, including outstanding interest. The city council issued the seven million four hundred and fifty thousand in bond anticipation notes last year for the purchase of the town mall, which matured in August. The plan is to roll over the outstanding principal and interest for another year during the redevelopment efforts. The financial impact of this action increases the city's outstanding debt for the site. However, this is intended to be temporary, a temporary situation as the city is working towards finalizing the development agreement, which will help pay off most, if not all, the outstanding debt.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. As this is a first reading, there is no action to be taken at this time. However, is there any discussion from council? Hearing none, then we will proceed. That concludes legislation for the evening. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Do any council members have anything they would like to bring up under unfinished business?
I just have one quick, one quick thing, and I don't know if this, I think this would be unfinished business, 'cause we've already done some stuff on the work. And probably to, uh, our Public Works Director, on Main Street, where the water line was put in and the concrete's on there, I've had a lot of people ask, is that gonna be smoothed out? And I don't mean to put you on the spot tonight, if.
It is, uh, for short answer. I don't have an exact timeframe. That's part of that waterline project with Cleveland Cliffs and their contractor, but I know they've met with the city engineer, uh, just recently about finalizing that. I'm hoping here in the next month or less even, and I know it is, uh, a, uh, roller coaster a bit when you drive through there, but that will all be fixed, and hopefully, here in, like I said, next month.
Thank you, so I didn't lie to people. I said, yeah, I'll fix it.
Yeah, it's, it's just a matter of time, but yes, it will be fixed.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Tadich. Mr. Horn?
Um, City Manager Combs, this, just to, um, I guess, make sure I understand what's going on. So, our building official, Larry Tuttle, he's getting information together for pricing for demolition. And then, if there's any parties that actually want to talk about anything else not demolition involved. The question I have is, is he, he mentioned here, um, for safety purposes, he can condemn it, but the fire department still has to enter, and if there's an emergency situation. So I guess the question I, my question is, is under unfinished business, is he still on, that, that process is, he said it's gonna take a month or so, so by June or July, we'll have some more information on that?
Uh, my understanding from Community and Economic Development, it should be end of July, early August.
Okay.
They'll have that compiled.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any other unfinished business from council today? Hearing none, that concludes unfinished business, and we will move on to, um, new business. Do any members of council have any new business this evening?
I do.
Mr. Horn?
Uh, just one thing, uh, and this is probably for our, our law director. Ashley provides us with a, uh, a weekly update, and I noticed that on the very bottom, that all the employees of the, um, uh, city had to go through the Ohio Ethics, uh, one-hour program. I recently had to do that myself to keep my, my license, one of my licenses that I have. Uh, the question I have is, and I, I did this when I was on the, um, appeals board, I had resigned from, but my question is, is can we look into having all of our boards, uh, take that one hour free, you do it online, there's actual little quizzes in between, so they make you retain, at the end you have a certificate, then said certificate can be, uh, filed with our clerk of counsel. So if, and, and in our boards, they can make decisions that benefit them or their families. So there is an ethics thing that needs to happen within our boards. True, they are volunteers, but they do make decisions for the city. So if you could just look into that, uh, that, we used to do it in the past, uh, 'cause I'm not, I haven't been off the appeals board, and it was two years ago. And I remember coming here, and they spoke to us, they gave us a packet, and then we watched the video. But you can do this at your home. I did this, because I have to get my packet of all my CEUs and everything else, and that's one thing that we have to have, so if you could look into that, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Horn. Is there any other new business from council this evening? All right, thank you. Hearing none, that concludes new business. The next item on the agenda is Executive Session. And what I need to do is first, um, ask for a motion to amend the agenda regarding Executive Session to add, um, to the reasons for Executive Session, to conference with the attorney for the city to discuss disputes that are involving the city that are of subject, that are the subject of pending court action. Is there a motion to amend? Thank you. Is there a second to amend?
Second.
Thank you. It has properly moved and seconded. Um, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slanka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the motion passes. Now, do we have a motion to move to executive session under the authority of ORC 121.22G1 to consider the appointment of a public employee or official, and under the authority of ORC 121.22B3 to conference with an attorney for the city concerning disputes involving the city that are subject of pending court action?
Motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to move to executive session. We will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gang, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankah?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the motion passes. Council will now move to executive session.[438.68]
Do we have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to return to open session. We will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gang, please call the roll.
Mayor Slankka.
Yes.
Mr. Lawley.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Yeses have it and the motion passes. Council will now turn, return to open session. Do we have a motion to approve the appointment of our city manager Ms. Ashley Combs as our local government representative to replace Nathan Cahal on the Renaissance Point Arena District new authority, community, autho- new commu- new community authority?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. We will proceed to, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gang, please call the roll.
Mr. Lawley.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Slankka.
Yes. The yeses have it and the motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the appointment of, by the mayor and with the consent of council to appoint city manager Ms. Ashley Combs to replace Nathan Cahal as board member of the Middletown Port Authority?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gang, please call the roll.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Slankka.
Yes.
Mr. Lawley.
Yes.
Thank you. The yeses have it and the motion passes. This concludes our regular city council meeting for Middletown, Ohio, Tuesday, May 20th, 2025 at 6:54 PM. This meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025 at 5:30 PM in these chambers for our next regular city council meeting. Thank you and good night.